Community participation, is there anyone who would like to speak to the board? No? Consent agenda, is there a motion for the consent agenda? Madam Chair, I think a motion that we use if we accept the consent agenda as presented. Is there a second?
Sure.
All those in favor of I?
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you. Reports, Mr. Drescher.
All right, thank you. I just thought I'd spend a minute this evening talking about enrollment and membership. Over the last couple of years, we have had a decline in membership in our schools which has impacted state funding. We expected a slight upward swing this year and we are experiencing that, so I'm very happy to report that day one, we had 5,133 students compared to 5,025 students the year before. So that's an upswing of 108. And then now we're at 5,214. So we've had, almost all of the kids that have enrolled have shown up. We have about 18 students that have been enrolled that haven't shown up yet, so I'm not quite sure where they are, and we're looking for them.
Still on vacation.
Yeah, we're looking for them. But that number of 5214 is about 64 more students than what our budget is created with, and that's a good thing. What that allows us to do is feel fairly comfortable that the state dollars that we are slated to get will be able to actually get. September 30th, the state does its kind of first count, official count, for the membership, and that's when our first half of the year state funding is determined. And they do that again in March, and then it's adjusted for the whole year. So I'm just pleased to report that in terms of state funding, we should be in decent shape this year. That's a good thing. The last couple of years, you'll know, I've come to you and said, "We've got to do some adjustments to our budget before we even really get started." So it's nice to be able to do that. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Board reports, Mr. Williams?
I have nothing to report tonight, Madam Chair.
Mr. Rosen?
No, I have nothing to report, but we simply think about the folks in Bahana Bahamas, about that beach music and all this.
Quite a rough time.
Slightly rough time.
Mrs. McPhee, I have nothing to report, please. Mr. Walters?
No, Mr. Drescher, with the increase, we have been absorbed, we don't have any classes out of state.
Well, that's a good question, Mr. Walters. We have three elementary classrooms that are watching very closely. We have something called class size reduction, which state funding is based on that we have to keep our classrooms at certain schools at certain levels. And LFK right now, kindergarten, first and third, we're watching those very closely. There is a potential we have to add teachers at those levels. So we'll wait till September 30th to have those numbers. Right now, we're okay, but you know, four, five more students, we could be, I could be coming to you and saying we need to add some positions. Good question, thank you.
And I don't have a report.
Just wanted to say a special thanks to Mr. Livesay and his crew. I know they've been working as best they could to keep the LFK situation under control, and seems like we've come out on the good side of that one. And I understand, there's one teacher of Resi that keeps bothering me about air conditioning and I think you're working on that as well, but your guys certainly have done a great job getting the year kicked off and addressing issues.
And I don't have a report. I am starting to go to the football games, so just make everyone aware that football season is here, and to get out and support our teams on Friday evenings. Action agenda, acceptance of donation, Mr. Drescher.
We have a number of excellent partnerships in our school division, and one of those is with Sedexo. They're not only a great partner with our food service, but they have done a donation of school supplies to Warren County Public Schools, and we have divided those among the schools and have given those for students to use. So I recommend that this donation be accepted with gratitude.
Mr. Drescher.
Madam Chair, comment in a motion. Mr. Drescher, how do we get this out to the public that Sedexo gave these school supplies?
We could certainly put it on our Facebook account. Certainly, you know, we've actually had a number of folks that have given supplies in the last year. That's a good idea, to put it out there in front of folks.
The reason I asked, somebody was in LuRae the other day, and they walked into the office, and I don't know what school, and there was just school supplies running out their ears. And they said, "Where did all this come from?" Walmart up the street, every year it just comes down and dumps a bunch of stuff on us. So that's really nice, I think, with this. Anybody that makes a donation, we should give them credit for it, because it is helping the children.
I agree. Good call.
Is there a Facebook page well utilized?
It is. When we put stuff on Facebook, people will listen to it.
Madam Chair, I move that donation of school supplies to Warren County Public Schools by Sedexo be accepted with gratitude.
Second, all those in favor of I?
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you. Approval of sanitary sewer easement, Mrs. Shepherd.
Chris Ramsey of Ramsey Incorporated has requested a sanitary sewer easement located at the edge of the school board property, which houses Hill and Jay Barber Elementary School and Warren County High School. The sanitary sewer easement will be located in the flood plain, and the school system does not have plans for this part of the property. The attached map to your board agenda item shows the area of the approximate location of the easement circled in green. A draft deed is attached along with a copy of the plat outlining the location of the sanitary sewer easement. We discussed this at the work session in August. If you have any questions, I believe Mr. Ramsey is here, so he would be able to answer questions or I can answer them as well.
I think both of us have our questions answered at the last meeting. Any other comments?
I have nothing. I mean, it's pretty much unusable ground, and it's not far on our property, 60 feet maybe.
60 feet by 20 feet. Do we need to be a good neighbor?
Absolutely, absolutely.
Would you like to offer a motion?
Madam Chair, I move approval be given for the chair of the school board to sign the deed of easement for sanitary sewer utilities for the area identified on the attached plat prepared by Joseph G. Brogan Jr. on July 17th, 2019, for the land designated as tax map 20A14-2, parcel one.
My second.
All those in favor of I?
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you.
Thank you.
Stay where you are. Approval of expenditure over $15,000, food and nutrition services, point of sale software and hardware support package.
Thank you. Approval is requested to review the enterprise point of sale software and hardware package from Data Business Systems Incorporated for the food and nutrition program. This system is used in all of our cafeterias. This program automates sales activity, meal and eligibility counts, and provides data for state and federal reports. The software processes cafeteria sales, tracks items sold, generates reports, and provides information on meals purchased. This system allows parents to put money on students' lunch account through a secure internet connection. Parents are able to monitor whether their child has purchased for breakfast or lunch using the online portion of this program. This is a piece of software that we've purchased every year, and I'll be happy to answer any questions, and I believe Ms. Potts is here as well, if I'm not able to.
I'm just curious, is there a way to tell how many parents actually get on and check and see what their child is eating? I would get that information for you.
No, I was just curious, do we have a lot?
We do.
Do we have the exact number? Every year is more as well, more and more people use it. It's a great safety net if you are in DC or somewhere and realize that you don't have any money on your account and you want to put it on there. It is very convenient for some people.
This is also about allergies. Good allergies and this type of thing, as you say, it's a safety net, it's another safety feature for students, particularly those that might try to skirt their allergy.
Madam Chair, I move approval be given to purchase the point of sale software and hardware support package from Data Business Systems in amount of $20,035.84. Second. All those in favor of I?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you, Mrs. Shepherd. Memorandum of understanding for grounds maintenance between the county and Warren County Public Schools.
Thank you. During the fiscal year budget, fiscal year '20 budget discussions, the school system approached the county. We approached the county about taking over our grounds maintenance service. The thought was the county was better equipped to handle grounds maintenance with the well-established parks and recreation department and the ability to hire seasonal employees. The agreement includes grass, mowing, trimming, edging, fertilizing, reseeding, application of pesticides, et cetera, shrubs, trees and plant beds, mulching, pruning, thinning, weeding, removal of excess growth or dead plants or shrubs, mulching and weeding playgrounds, inspecting and mowing or brush hogging retention ponds, and they will assist with snow removal with one vehicle until they finish what they need to do, and then they will help otherwise. Warren County Public Schools will be responsible for the cost of salt, ice melt and other chemicals used on school properties for snow removal. Attached to the memorandum of agreement to formalize this agreement, the MOA, I should say MOA, is for a 12-month term with annual automatic renewals unless notice is given to terminate by either party. I know you received this late this afternoon, so if you would like to take an opportunity to approve it, you may, or we can discuss it at the next work session in September.
Didn't we start this two months ago?
We did. We started it in July 1st, and this is just to formalize the relationship.
How's it going so far? I know there's a transition period there regarding all the different...
There is a transition period. We had four grounds crew whenever we had the grounds maintenance, and we did not transition any of our employees over to the county. We were going to transition two, but both of them decided not to move to the county for employment, so there was nobody that had experience that went over. However, there were periods of time throughout the last year where we only had two or three crew members that were available for mowing. So we did as best we could, but we probably left the county in a spot where our grounds weren't as good as they should have been when we turned them over to them. So I think their county is doing a fantastic job getting us up to, you know, up to speed. They were working really late before school started in order to make sure that the front of the buildings were mulched and trimmed and ready to go for school to start. So it has been a transition process. I believe the county is fully staffed at this time, and I think it will continue to become, be better as we move forward.
I have seen the mountain early in the morning.
Yes.
Who's Warren County Public Schools' point of contact?
So I am the point of contact, and then Greg Livesay is my second, yes.
What's the pleasure of the board? I know you just got this information. Do you want to look over it, or have you had a chance to read it?
I think we've been talking about it enough, anytime they can provide some services, I would go ahead and read it.
The only question I have, it says assist with removal of our properties. We still have all of our snow equipment?
We do.
And we still have all the guys to operate? They're going to give us one person and one truck of some sort?
Right, yes.
And they get this done and whatever else, cord house, then they'll send additional if they get done. And if it's a real bad snowstorm, we're not, probably won't be in school.
Is that a rumor that it'll hold it to two inches of snow?
To what?
Just more random.
So we did not transition any of our snow removal equipment to the county. We did transition some mowers and some weed eaters and some blowers, but no snow removal equipment.
I didn't know. Like you said, they worked really late. I saw them at E. Wilson, late the day before school started, I mean, late. Then they have, one of the vehicles has park ranger on, gentleman pulls up there the other day with a little push mower, mows all around E. Wilson, gets back in his truck, goes around back, checks it. So, I mean, it's kind of a different setup than what we had, because I guess they have people that work later in the evenings, and they're out taking care of what they take care of. So I perceive an issue with what I've read, but I'm with the pleasure of the board.
You okay with that?
I'll make a motion.
I would move approval be given for the school board chair and superintendent to sign the memorandum of agreement for grounds maintenance between the county of Warren and the Warren County School Board.
Second. All those in favor of I?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you, Mrs. Shepherd. Approval of Skyline Middle School copier lease, Mr. Brand.
Good evening. The current lease for the copiers at Skyline Middle School expire on September 15th, 2019. After reviewing the available replacement options, it is recommended that the attached DSI copiers replace the existing DSI copiers. This contract was competitively bid through AEP A and meets Virginia Public Procurement, that's a tongue twister, requirements. The terms of the contract is for 36 monthly lease payments of $2,099 per month for a total of, total cost of $75,564 or $25,188 per year. The cost of this copier or the payments come out of Skyline Middle School budget. And do you have any questions? And this is all, the reason I would do that is because we're trying to get them all into one contract. It drives down the price. So you all saw me last month, you'll see me at the next one, next meeting for another one, and we're just trying to get them all in one place.
How many schools are we missing now to be under all of our contracts?
We're only missing, I believe, one. At this time, they went with another company.
On the sales order, it says unlimited black and full color service and supply contract, including toner drums, developer and staples.
Yes.
But no paper, right?
No paper.
Black, print as many colors you want.
Yes.
It's all covered under that.
That's been for some time.
Yeah.
Color usually costs, but black and white is usually unlimited.
This says unlimited.
For color?
Unlimited black and full color.
Oh, they have a very good deal then.
That's what I thought.
Aren't they aware of that?
Maybe Dr. Bachar negotiated, I don't know. But I thought, I mean, that's why I'm trying to clarify.
Yeah, and I did talk to Donna Berryman about this. I believe what they did is they were able to give them an estimate of how many, and so they can, they can deal, like, okay, I can, I can come to this price if you just stay within this, this amount of color copies. And they usually do. I think they've been doing it for a while now.
How's that compared to your last price wise?
They're similar, they're similar, except for the color, that's...
That's a huge...
Yeah, that is a big deal, yeah. So, yeah, our contracts come out, we're going to have to talk about that.
Would you like to offer a motion? Did you have questions to ask? Okay.
Madam Chair, I move that a contract in amount of $75,564 be ordered to Document Solutions Incorporated, DSI, for the lease of copiers at Skyline Middle School, and that superintendent be authorized to sign this lease agreement.
Second. All those in favor of I?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Ramsey. High schools tennis court repairs, Mr. Livesay.
Good evening. Wanted to come back this evening to provide a follow-up status, I guess, report and action for the tennis court repairs at both high schools. As you recall, back at the July meeting, we discussed the repairs and the cost of those repairs, and some concerns, budgetary and, I guess, technical concerns, as we had other issues with the tennis courts at both high schools. As we suggested, we did reach out to a geotechnical consultant, WDP and Associates. I had met with Mr. Rob Nyberg back in mid-July, and at that time, Rob did a pretty detailed review of the construction plan, several drawings, looked at the previous repairs that had been done, and did site visits to both schools. He is of the general opinion that there's no soil movement beneath these tennis courts. So, you know, from a civil standpoint, you know, the courts appear to be on good base, good structure. He felt that everything he saw was really just age-related, and tennis courts is what we typically see. At this time, we have not gone on to contract with WDP for any further studies, i.e. core drills, et cetera. He doesn't really feel it's necessary at this time to do so, again, based on his observations and reviews. So I don't think we recommend at this time to go into contract for that. As the costs were extremely or significantly high for the previous repairs, as mentioned, I did have an in-depth discussion with the company, American Tennis Courts, or ATC Corporation, about what we could do to reduce the scope, to reduce the cost. As you know, we had over $65,000 in cost, you know, for the previous suggested repairs. And that's a pretty huge impact too, I mean, it's a repair budget, roughly 25% of it. So what can we do to reduce these costs? And basically, by reducing the scope, we would take out what they call a crack repair overlay system. And that's a big cost, or the biggest piece of the cost in this previous proposal. We would end up just what we call a crack-filled leveling and then a repainting of the repaired areas, okay? I can't say, I don't want to call this a stopgap, but you know, we're going to have to continue to do repairs like this until these courts are totally resurfaced. Hopefully, not to the extent we're having to do this time. If you remember, we had quite a few linear feet at both schools that needed to be repaired. So again, we'll have a few more in the future, but hopefully not to this extent.
Can they give us an estimate of how long this lasts?
You know, to be honest, if these repairs, we'll probably be lucky to get a year.
Really? So we're looking at having to do...
Having to do this, it's recurring maintenance. And again, tennis courts, once you start hitting that 10-year mark, that asphalt really starts to, it dries out, it becomes rotten, and then the weather affects it. So again, hopefully, we won't have to go to this extent. But by cutting the cost by almost two-thirds, you know, I think we can better manage that going forward.
It will make competition.
Yes, and again, that's two priorities, one, safety, two, competition play, you know.
If we approve this, when will this work be done and no one does anything?
He is estimating probably about three to five days per school, weather permitting, and we would hope to get it done before mid to late October, prior to that.
I know they're using the courts now.
Yes, so we would have to schedule with the activities directors to work around that.
By cutting the price, Mr. Livesay, leaving that one part out, yeah, we save money. And your best opinion or estimate is, by doing what we're proposing to do, we get a year out of it before we're going to do something else. What if we added on the second phase? How many, how much time does that add before we have to do anything? I mean, just general opinion, you've been around a long time.
You know...
I don't have any idea.
You know, yes, it would probably extend those repairs a little bit longer, but I can't sit here and say it's going to add six months or another year to it. Tennis courts will crack, that's...
But probably not in the same location.
Not in the same location.
So by us doing step two, we don't get...
At the age of these courts, I'm not sure I would recommend going full scope of the repairs right now.
I wonder what one of those costs to redo?
The whole tennis court?
Does a whole tennis court have to... Roughly?
Roughly, I think we're easily $65,000 to $80,000 per court.
Per court, not per school.
Not per school, per court.
Yeah, we have.
Now, there's two different methods you can do to resurface these courts. You can either tear out what's there and rebuild it, or you can use what is known as the slip sheet method. Basically, they put a court over a court. I have had experience with that, and I've had those repairs last eight years without touching them, so.
First.
Tennis courts are not...
I know, it's a lot of money.
Yeah, it is a lot of money.
You have school classes.
Yeah, a lot of...
Three quarters of one.
Okay. Any more discussion, questions for Mr. Livesay? No? I think I should be. Madam Chair, I move approval be given toward a contract to ATC Corporation about $26,276 for repairs to the tennis courts at Skyline High School and Warren County High School. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor of I?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you for looking into that for us, because I know we had some questions.
No, and that's what we're supposed to do, and it's tough to bite that bullet.
If it was, thank you.
Thank you.
Approval of additional appropriation request, Mr. Ballantyne.
Good evening. For the second time in this relatively young fiscal year, I'm coming to you asking to, for your permission, to request from the Board of Supervisors an increase in our appropriation. And the reason that's necessary is for the school board to receive any funding and then spend it, it must be appropriated by the governing body. In this case, it would be the Warren County Board of Supervisors. When we build a budget, we try to anticipate where we're going to receive all of our revenue and all the programs we'll be able to support with that, but throughout the year, additional revenue comes in. A number of these are grants, some of them are at the local level, like the Warren County Educational Endowment Grant that you'll be asked to approve requesting in the amount of $10,000. Some are state grants, which a lot of the items on here are for career and technical education supplies and things that the state awarded after our budget was approved. And then some of them are even federal grants, such as the Title IV, which helps fund our summer program at the elementary levels. Then there are other things, such as insurance adjustments. We've had two insurance claims we're asking for here. A transformer at LFK was struck during a lightning storm back in July, so we're, we did receive some insurance money there, and we need to receive that so we can spend it or get it approved. And then also, we had some fiber, or damage to our fiber network from some squirrels chewing through it, which you've probably heard about, and we did receive an insurance adjustment on that, so we do need to ask to have, for that to be able to receive. So when you total all these items up that we have at the moment, it would increase our appropriation by $159,121. The fortunate part of this is no additional local funds from the Board of Supervisors are required. It's all either from other, well, from other sources other than what they fund us. So we'd be glad to answer any questions you might have, and would ask your approval that the superintendent may request from the Board of Supervisors that our appropriation be increased by this amount.
Just, I guess it's a statement as much as a question, but we have unblocks or items to use these funds on, so it's not, and those are generally based on priorities that we have left out of the budget, that if we get any funding, we will try to do this and that kind of thing.
Yes, they're all specifically targeted, none of it's going to be held in reserve for what-if or whatever. And in fact, many of them have strings attached to them, so to speak, the grants for the career and technical education, the Warren County Educational Endowment Grant for $10,000 was awarded for a specific purpose. And of course, the insurance adjustments, Mr. Livesay's had to pay for a lot of that and Mr. Grant out of their budgets already, so this will restore at least a part of it. There's a $1,000 deductible on any property claim, so their budget will still take a $1,000 hit, but at least it'll lessen the full impact of it. So yes, each of those items is targeted for a very specific program or purpose.
Yeah. Madam Chair, I move that the Warren County Board of Supervisors will be requested to increase the school board's fiscal year 2019 to 2020 operating fund budget by $159,121.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor of I?
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you. Close meeting, we need to go into closed meeting, is there a motion?
This motion is made at this open public meeting of the Warren County School Board and comes closing meeting, according to Virginia Code Section 2.2-3711. of Virginia Code Section 2.2-3711. The school board desires to discuss the following matters in the closed meeting. Section 2.2-3711A1, discussion, consideration, or interviews of respective candidates for employment, assignment, appointment, promotion, performance, emotion, salaries, disciplining or resignation of employees of the school board, specifically the superintendent's evaluation. And Section 2.2-3711A2, discussion or consideration, mission, or disciplinary matters, or any other matters that involve the disclosure of information containing a scholastic record concerning any student in Warren County Public Schools, specifically a student discipline measure.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Ballantyne, please call roll.
Mrs. McEthan?
Yes.
Mr. Wells?
Aye.
Madam Chair?
Aye.
Mr. Rosen?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Motion carries. We are in a closed session.
Madam Chair, according to the votes reported by the clerk, the school board of Warren County has hereby certified, to the best of each member's knowledge, one, only public business matters lawfully presented from open meeting requirements under Virginia Freedom of Information Act are discussed in the closed meeting, to which the certification applies; and two, only such public business matters as were identified in the motion, by which the closed meeting is convened, or heard, discussed, or considered by the board.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Ballantyne, please call roll.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Rosen?
Aye.
Madam Chair?
Aye.
Mr. Wells?
Aye.
Mrs. McEthan?
Aye.
Motion carries. We are out of closed session. Is there any further business? Nope. Meeting adjourned.